All right. It's seven o'clock. It is July 9th for the Newton Planning Board Public Meeting. So we will start with the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before we get started, so we have Mr. Gibbons in place of the excused Mr. Moran. Do we have to do a...
Moran.
Moran, sorry. I was reading off the paper.
And Ms. Burke is also absent. That was Mr. Ryan.
We got anybody from Zoom on, Jim? I can't see.
Ms. White.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi there. I can't hear Jim, so...
Must be faulty hardware or something.
Right.
As he puts his mic on. All right. So first up, we have Board Business. We have the acceptance of the minutes for our meeting on June 11th.
Sorry, I guess that is 6:11.
It's been a while. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes dated 6/11/24.
I'll second it.
No, I'm on your microphone.
My apologies. Ms. White? Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Excuse me. Bob, do you have your mic on because I can't really hear you?
Can you hear me?
Check and see whether or not you're on mute.
I can't see a light on you.
How about now, Barbara?
Now I can hear you. Thank you.
You're muted?
Yep.
Next up, we have the NEBRA manifest.
So I'll move to pay the NEBRA manifest in the amount of $900.06.
I'll second that. Ms. White? Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next up, we have the NEBRA closeout manifest in the amount of $5,393.43.
I will make the motion to close the NEBRA manifest out in the amount of $5,393.43. I'll second.
Gentlemen, great to see you guys.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Jim, quick question. Do you know offhand how many we still have open at this point now?
Four.
Just four of them? Okay.
I believe...
Just curious.
That actually, that gets a whole bunch of the smaller ones.
Right. That had come before the board.
The ones that are still open are anything that we haven't recorded for or anything that required the NEBRA be kept open for town engineer if he has to come make a visit.
Right.
Those have to be kept open until he says he knows that it's complete to his requirement as far as not having any further input.
Thank you. Okay. We have another NEBRA processing fee for the amount of $47.25.
Make a motion, move to pay the NEBRA processing fee manifest in the amount of $47.25.
I'll second it. Thank you. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
All right. We got two more here. So the HOP grant manifest four in the amount of $17,326.25.
Move to pay the HOP grant manifest number four in the amount of $17,326.25.
I'll second it.
Real quick for discussion, Jim, before we vote on it, if you could just, for the public's point of interest, just quickly say what that's for.
Okay. The HOP grant is the money that is paying. Most of it's going to Rockham Planning Commission to cover all of the work that Jennifer has done for the town for the housing chapter of the master plan. And, sorry, I do have a speech impediment. Sometimes I can't get it quite out there. The housing chapter of the master plan plus the audit, the survey, I mean, there's a lot that that grant covered. A small amount, the $17,000 is going to RPC, the town, and by the way, these manifests don't get turned in until I get the check from Plan New Hampshire. So there's money for the treasurer to pay them with.
Right.
The, out of that manifest, $326.25 covers my administrative time.
Yeah. Bob, just, I think, another important note is that this all the work came from grant funds. No Newton funding was used to supplement the...
Right. There was no town match.
Nope.
No.
Yep.
And that's why, even though they'll get signed tonight, I don't put the manifest into the treasurer until I also have a check to go with it. So that she, there's a revolving account that it goes into, and one check will be made out to RPC, one check will be made out to the town of Newton, and my hours get put in at the same time.
Yeah. I just want the information put out to anybody that is listening now or listens at a later date when they hear the HOP grant manifest so that they have an understanding of what that is and what it's all about and how we've been working on the, now I'm gonna have that moment.
The housing chapter.
Yeah. So that we can get that accomplished and up to date. So, thank you.
No problem. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
And I apologize, Mr. Eddy, the, what says on your page is incorrect. The remaining one is to pay the HOP grant manifest number five. The amount there is correct. I just, for some reason, typed in NEBRA instead of HOP grant.
Okay. So, as mentioned, the final item here is for HOP grant number five in the amount of
I'll make a motion to pay the HOP grant number five in the amount of $9,037.73.
I'll second it. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next up on the agenda, we have our housing grants, part two.
So the next round of housing grants, still the housing opportunity and planning...
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair. I can't hear Jennifer. I don't know if her mic is on or not.
Sorry, Barbara. I was also on mute.
Thank you.
So the next round of Housing Opportunity and Planning Grants was announced about a month ago. It is basically a continuation of the grant funds that were used to finish up the grant work we just did to allow municipalities to continue with housing discussions. That can include a variety of things, but specifically land planning ordinances, a few building ordinances if possible, basically implementing some of the discussion we've had with some of the housing work we've been doing and helping municipalities with technical assistance to be able to move forward with some of those. That could be ordinances that are very, very small in nature or a bundle of small ordinances. It could be some potentially very large ordinances. That grant is due September 30th, so we have time to discuss if you want, if you even want to apply for it. Because you've already had a housing grant, you get sort of first dibs of the 2.9 million that the state has put forward to continue this work with, along with all of the other communities that received the initial HOP grants. The grant can be for up to $100,000. I don't actually believe that Newton needs $100,000 worth of housing planning, but I think that you should take advantage of the grant funds because there is no match. So it's a really good opportunity. So the applications are due September 30th. You can ask for up to $100,000. That can include, if we needed to do, a lot of outreach, which we need to do, but things like landscape architects renderings, that sort of stuff can also be done. I don't know if you had a question for...
You started the answer.
Okay.
I was about to ask kind of, you know, you mentioned we don't necessarily need the $100,000, but let's say we do get that. Is, can those, where can those funds be dispersed?
So the funds primarily have to go towards planning and implementation of housing. It's housing diversity. It's not just low income or workforce housing specifically. If there is a need for things like a landscape architect because you're going to help support a zoning ordinance, you may put forth a regulation change. That can be worked into the grants. Education and outreach has to be part of the grant application. So if there is the need for that kind of support, and that's not something my office does, if you were to work with us, we would hire that out. If there's mapping work that needs to be done, if there is more community engagement, which there should be, that can all be paid for under the grant. So there are a few things that I would recommend that we, if we want to move forward, we at least talk about it the August meeting. RPC can help write the grant. It's not a real heavy lift for writing the grant application. You, if you applied by September 30th, you would hear within 60 days of submitting the grant whether you receive it. It would probably actually be a little faster than that, knowing how they work. The grant can go through September 2026, and the reason that is important is that, so you get a September 30th application date, up to 60 days to turn around to get the grant announcement. That doesn't leave a whole lot of time for zoning changes unless they are small in nature for town meeting 2025. So anything that would be a large zoning ordinance change, you should expect to work on for March 2026. Zoning is one of the things that can be worked on. There are also smaller things that would generally fit under site plan or subdivision regulations, and in some cases, it could actually be select board health ordinances that can also be worked on that aren't as tied to that March meeting date. So that can also be part of it.
And to reiterate, we have the board and you have talked numerous times about a bunch of ordinances that we have that are somewhat outdated and that need to be brought up to For, for the community as a whole, one in particular, as we talked about, that workforce housing. If we don't bring those up to date, then a contractor could permissibly come into town, put an application in, and with outdated ordinances, he could, if he gets denied, go to court, get the court to approve it, and then have his way with being able to do the workforce housing as permissible without the town putting forth updated ordinances. So for the benefit of the town and the fact, like Jen was saying earlier, that this is money that's come to the town to where thus it saves the taxpayers money and we're able to accomplish quite a bit, I think that it only makes common sense to further complete the journey that we started with the housing grant for the master plan and get this town up to date, like I said, so that the citizens of the town aren't left at bay. So I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the circuit rider to apply for the grant.
Can I just make one comment on that?
Yep.
That's sort of an interim of, why don't I come back for the August meeting with a proposed scope of work? And there might be a few things in there that you do want to do or you don't want to do, but sort of the biggest scope that I would recommend for you to do, and if we need to whittle it down, just because you think, maybe something's not necessary, maybe it's too much. So you have a little bit more to digest before you authorize me to apply for a grant that you don't know the scope of work on. But I can come with a draft scope of work for you to consider in August.
No, I think you can apply for it, and then you can come back to us and just tell us. Because you know what we need to do. We've already talked about...
I have a, I have a good idea, and I appreciate the faith.
I mean, we've talked to you about what we're looking to do, right, with a lot of the stuff, with some of the ordinances. One of them was the, where we have the ordinances for the attached dwelling units.
ADUs.
Yeah. So I do think there could be work done on accessory dwellings and duplexes a little bit, but...
Right. In that aspect, the, right, the workforce housing, and there were some other issues that we talked about. So you know the idea of where we need to go and what we've discussed, so I feel very comfortable with having you, go ahead and go forth with it.
I concur with that decision.
Okay. I will have to come back to you to get your true, I will say, approval and vote on a scope of work.
Yep.
So I'll start drafting it, and I'm still gonna bring it back to you in August.
Mr. Gibbons, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay.
I will.
Jack, you may be on mute also.
Yes.
Now, that's the button on the top of the...
It's on.
I'm waiting for the chair to...
Oh, okay.
To just nod that you want me to call the question.
Yeah. I mean, I, just hearing what Jen said, I mean, it sounds like we should have some sort of documentation on what we're approving, right?
I'm very comfortable with you not voting to approve for me to vote, to go move forward with a grant proposal tonight. I don't think I need that. I just need your concurrence that you'd like me to present the scope of work to you.
Then, yes. Then I think that's what we're voting on then, right?
Okay.
Mr. Marshon withdrawing his...
I'll withdraw it.
Thank you.
You still have enough time for everything that we're talking about? So I'll move to withdraw the motion for her to do the grant, but to put forth the information to supply to the board.
Good.
I have my marching orders.
Want to second that?
Oh, sure. I'll second that. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papacristus?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Eddy?
I have one other thing to talk to you guys about.
Yep.
Oh, just where Ms. Rowden mentioned coming back in August with the information, you have nothing scheduled for the meeting of the 25th of July. You as the...
23rd.
Vice Chair or Acting Chair can cancel that if you wish.
If we don't have an agenda, and it won't be until the meeting after, that we are able to talk about that, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. You've met the statutory requirement of having a meeting in July. You don't have to have one on the 25th. So would you like to cancel it?
Unless there's any...
Yeah, no. Statutes only say, right, one meeting a month, right?
Yeah.
Correct. Although, in truth, if you don't have any cases, you also do not have to meet.
Right.
What's that date, Jim? Is it the 23rd?
It's the 23rd.
It's the 23rd. Yep.
Okay. My apology.
Two Tuesdays from now.
We'll forgive you.
Did you have something else?
Yeah. I was gonna just briefly go over the aquifer ordinance...
Yep.
That we were gonna start talking, that we have the money in hand to do the grant work for doing the aquifer ordinance amendments. Just to give you a little background, give me one second. I'm just gonna share my screen. So first of all, the work for me to be able to work on your aquifer ordinance is being paid for through a grant that RPC received through DES that is helping, intended to help both Newton and Southampton update their groundwater aquifer ordinances. The board had supported that grant application, so it's not being paid for by any Newton tax dollars for this technical assistance. But back in 2019, RPC had a grant also from DES that looked at all of our municipalities and looked at their groundwater and drinking water protection efforts. So we did a report for every town and then provided recommendations for those towns about how to improve their groundwater and drinking water protection efforts. Newton specifically, and I can send you all of these electronically, the number one recommendation was consider amendments to groundwater protection ordinances using the state groundwater model. Back in 2015, I had actually worked with the board then to make some small updates to your aquifer ordinance. There have subsequently been changes in state law that are subtle, but there's also been changes in some of the land use development patterns in Newton. Very specifically, more public water systems being installed. Sergeant Woods happens to be one of them. The school is one. You have a num, not a number, you have a few that have popped up that because of that sort of changes the status of what drinking water sources you have in town and may, that may be influencing a larger percent of the population, whereas all of the town is serviced by onsite wells. A lot of homeowners have their own well on their own property, but some folks are all being serviced by community water systems, which means the area around those wells that are influenced in water quality, it can be actually off of the property. So it's trying to balance things to protect drinking water for both people that have their own well on their own property and people that have community water systems from those uses that are most likely to harm them. So that's sort of the basic intent of updating the aquifer ordinance. Just to give you an idea of where the aquifer or the groundwater resources in Newton are, and this map is from that 2019 report, so it'll be a touch outdated. So if you see the sort of maroonie pink color, Newton is on good footing in that that is where all of the mapped groundwater resources, the aquifer resources are for the town. You already cover with your existing ordinance. What you don't actually cover are these, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. All of these dots are considered public water systems, and the circles that are around some of them are called wellhead protection areas. Those are the areas that if there were to be a contamination event, they have a likelihood of reaching that well. So there were to be a major spill of something, there were to be a gas station with a tank that leaked, it's very reasonable that that could enter those wells and cause a contamination issue. So as you can see, there are a number of these circles that are not fully encased in your existing aquifer protection district. So one of the things that we need to talk about is whether or not we want to bring those circles into the fold of your aquifer protection district. Some communities do, some communities don't. There's some reasons for and against that, but that should be one of the things that we talk about, whether we want to expand just the geographic boundaries of the aquifer district. I will point out, there's also wellhead protection areas from wells that are not located in Newton, in this case, Plastow, but they're wellhead protection areas, those contamination potentials that come into Newton. So some other neighboring towns are protecting wells that are located in Newton, while Newton can potentially also help protect wells that are located in other towns. It's sort of a give and take. I will be working with Southampton on similar aspects. They currently also do not include wellhead protection areas. They do include their full aquifer. So you'll be getting some neighboring potential benefits from your neighboring community. I'm gonna be using...
Excuse me, Jen?
Yep.
Jen, could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
What kind of liability does the town get if we include these areas in the aquifer protection? I mean, are we liable for something?
No. It's honestly, improving your groundwater protection ordinances is aimed at protecting and preventing future contamination. It doesn't have any liability aspect for the town, but it is good for long-term vitality of the community to not have its drinking water sources becoming contaminated. None of this effort will go back and retroactively fix any existing contaminants. You certainly have spots in town that have caused groundwater pollution. It's not anything that's extensive or out of the ordinary, but every town has those. I'll be providing a map of sort of where those known locations are, just to give you an idea, but, so no, there is not directly liability, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll be using the groundwater protection model that was developed back in 2015. I actually helped to develop this back then. It is in the process of being updated for 2024, which I, through other work, also have been heavily involved in, so I'm very familiar with the model ordinance. There are some aspects that I'm gonna suggest that make some of the language a little bit clearer in your ordinance, that make it easier to enforce, but mainly it's going to be just making clarifications to the existing regulation. We might talk about expanding it to be in parts of the town. It's not currently, but it's making the authority of the town clearer, having some standards that are very basic standards for groundwater protection, nothing extraordinary. There are sort of standard protections that are already in actually some of your stormwater regulations for commercial sites. It has very little influence on a residential homeowner's property. It does have some influence on what could be newly developed residential subdivisions, but on existing residential properties, it has very little impact, other than it might increase protection of their own groundwater because they fall near something that could Just to give you an idea, I started running through your ordinance a few weeks ago. Sorry, just take me a second. So while we are working on the aquifer protection district, there are a few places in the other parts of the zoning that we may need to talk about small adjustments just to support the intent of what we're doing with the aquifer. One of those might be adding a few definitions to the definition section, just to make it sort of a universal term, if that's something we're using. So it's possible we might add a definition or two to your basic definition section. And Barbara, I apologize for the scrolling. There are a few...
That's fine. I can read fast.
I don't expect you to digest any of the actual written word... I don't expect you to digest any of the actual written word, but I just wanted to show you where I had flagged things. In your section seven, you actually have a section that I've always thought should be updated anyway, and this would be the perfect excuse to do it. The establishment of zones, I would actually like to list underneath this all of your overlay districts. That would be like your wetlands district, your floodplain district, your aquifer district, your village district, just so it's a little easier for people to find. That's just sort of a housekeeping thing I'd like to do. There may be a small adjustment we might want to make to the wetland zoning ordinance, just in the purpose statement, because wetlands are effectively the filter for groundwater. So just mentioning that there is that tie, it might help to support your wetland ordinance a little bit. Not here to update the wetlands ordinance for this effort, other than just making that connection. So bulk of it's obviously the aquifer watershed protection ordinance. My most basic change that I would like to consider you guys to consider making is just changing the title, because a lot of people do not understand what an aquifer is. They might sort of understand what a watershed is. I would like to just change it to the groundwater protection district, or something that is a simpler term, so that people understand what is the purpose of this district without reading anything beyond the title. It's actually worked out pretty well in some other towns, so think about that a little bit. Under authority and purpose, you'll note that your statement is only one sentence. It's actually kind of a run-on sentence.
That's a big sentence.
It is a big sentence. Going to propose actually separating authority and purpose. Your authority could use some cleaned-up language and references, just to make it tighter legally. Expanding the purpose, so that people have an understanding with a couple of bullet points as to why do you even have this ordinance beyond protecting groundwater. We are likely going to need to add to the definitions. They would just be some standard definitions that are honestly mainly under state law, but they just help to reference it in the zoning ordinance itself. District boundaries, there are some notations in the district boundaries that we should make to make it cleaner for someone to be able to reference exactly the boundaries that we're talking about using the original USGS maps. It's a citation. It's not really changing the boundaries, it just makes it easier for someone to go back and reference. You also include in your district, and it's because Newton is the very headwaters of the city of Amesbury's water supply down in Mass. You have a very small area in the southeast corner on, just on the east side of 108 on Main Street, that is part of the Amesbury water supply land. It doesn't appear in anybody's groundwater aquifer district boundaries, that's just a geographical feature, so making that reference be a little bit easier to understand. So if someone going forward wanted to map it beyond my office, they would know what we're talking about. The boundaries would also be the place where we discuss, do we want to include those wellhead protection areas, those circles, or not? If we do want to, we end up adding it to the district boundaries. Cleaning up how you appeal a boundary, that just needs some basic language changes. It doesn't really change the intent that someone would be able to appeal where that district is, because groundwater is very hard to map. The best data we have is from 1986 or 87, I can't remember which year, but it's pretty old data.
It's also not static.
It's not static, although groundwater, aquifers are more static than wetlands. So it is, as a geological feature, the best available, but you still always do things like test pits when you're putting in septic systems and drilling wells. That doesn't actually change the aquifer boundaries themselves, although the groundwater resources certainly are being utilized in different ways. Getting down into the use regulations, you guys have very little, they're basically considered performance standards, like what are the basic things if you're going to do something in this aquifer district, particularly those uses that have a high chance of contaminating the groundwater, that we want to have some standards for someone to need to meet if they are doing those really high-risk potential contaminants. So that's going to be probably one of the bigger parts of the conversation, is what performance standards. I'm going to present you with a whole bunch. We'll talk about the subtleties of them. You'll tell me if you don't want to include them or you do, we'll hear from the public on it.
Is there any examples today in Newton of kind of areas that, you know, would potentially introduce these contaminants, or is this more future?
Generally, the most potential contamination sources are typically associated with non-residential uses, so auto body garages, industrial uses of some kind.
We have the old transfer station. The town has, every year, we have test pits that they have to sample the water for contamination.
Yep, you certainly have known contamination sources in town. I mean, it's largely from historical uses. I mean, Newton, like almost every town, has PFAS contamination issues.
Country pond.
Country pond in some places, so there's a variety, there's, you don't have a super fun site in Newton, but you have spots that have contamination.
Fair enough, okay.
You also have a large area of industrial commercially zoned properties that do not have development on them currently, that there are some uses that you may not want to allow in those areas because of the risk to the aquifer. It happens to coincide in some areas with your aquifer.
So the 125 development, what goes in there would probably matter as far as, because the renting units have as well as...
Yep. I will say, off of Puzzle Lane, this is just, it's already been approved, there was a commercial cleaning business that wanted to come in, and it happened to be in the aquifer. And it, because of the nature of their business, everything was stored inside, it had double containment, it was, none of it, it was in small quantities. While it sounds like it was a really big potential contamination source, because of the nature of how they were operating, the risk was very, very low. And that's the intent, is that that kind of very low risk, you can mitigate most of the threats. It's, you know, it's not permitted anymore, but a single-walled gas station tank is a really big risk. That's why the state of New Hampshire in 2003 no longer allowed single-walled gas tanks. You have to have a double walled with all sorts of bells and whistles. So yes, there are definitely uses you're not going to want, that currently maybe could go in. So that's kind of the things that we need to talk about.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And there are tiers of risk that we'll talk about as well. But that's kind of some of the performance standards. You guys do have coverage as far as impervious surface coverage and lot sizing. Those certainly get played into groundwater contamination. Some of that is taken care of by your stormwater regulations, that are actually a higher standard than your current groundwater standard. We will talk about uses, so what uses are prohibited, and thus the only way you'd be able to use them, do them now, or potentially with changes, is to get a variance. That will remain the same. We will have to have a list of prohibited uses. The relief to that would still be go and get a variance. So it's not impossible, it just makes it a little bit more difficult. Then you have uses that are just outright permitted. Effectively, every residential use is permitted. Effectively, almost every agricultural use is permitted. Most commercial and industrial uses are still allowed. Some, and this kind of gets to the next tier, right now you guys have a special exception from the ZBA for certain uses. What do they need, what criteria do they need to meet? I am going to recommend we change this to a conditional use permit, that would stay with the planning board, only because you guys are used to dealing with those a little bit more, and with specific criteria that ties back to protecting the groundwater. Not, what you have right now is very general criteria for a use. It's fine, it's not great, but to really tie it back to why protect the groundwater, which is why that purpose statement at the beginning is really, really important.
Right.
That cleans it up legally and makes it clear for someone who maybe needs some relief. One of the examples you already, you currently have as prohibited is dry cleaning. Dry cleaning is a prohibited use, because historically, dry cleaning used some very toxic chemicals for the cleaning. Well, the model for many dry cleaners these days is they're not doing any of the cleaning at the spot you drop off your suits or your coats. It's just a collection spot, and they're doing the cleaning someplace else. So cleaning up some of that, like maybe, there are times when a dry cleaner would be allowed, just because of the nature of how they're operating the business. So there might be circumstances like that, where we take something that is prohibited and make it conditionally permitted, or just make it permitted outright because of some of that. Another thing that often is in that category is automotive uses. Car sales being a little bit less of a risk than a repair shop or a junkyard. So there are tiers of levels, and many businesses that fall into that middle tier. If they're conducting their business well, will meet any regulation for performance standard, because they're keeping their used oil in secondary containment. They're storing their antifreeze inside, they do not have a floor drain. So there's things like that that allow better operation and more flexibility, but also help better protect the groundwater. There's a few sort of logistical things I'm going to recommend that just sort of tighten up an ordinance. And then finally, there might be a little bit with the shoreline protection district, similar to the wetlands, where we want to tie in that protecting water aspect. So that's going to kind of be the plan. Expect to see this specific language in August, maybe early September. Sometimes groundwater ordinances get people riled up. Kind of depends on which way we go, sometimes they don't. Because you already have a pretty comprehensive coverage-wise, like where your aquifer district just already exists, it's not going to be as big of a shock probably to many community members, but I do think that, you know, what uses we're going to allow, not allow, conditional use permit potentially, I think will be an important discussion.
Also, based on the most recent survey, you know, the people of Newton would rather protect the groundwater than see development, so...
And that's usually a very common sentiment, protect the drinking water, because it's a requirement of basic life. But there are ways of protecting the water while still allowing people to utilize their property.
Sure, yes, right.
But like you said, one of the other key, very key aspects about it is being able to legally protect it, so that we have a recourse to fall back on.
And trying to have that language be clear for you, for property owners, for voters, for code enforcement, for future development, can help everyone literally be on the same page.
Really important in today's society to be real clear and concise as much as you can.
It will still be an ordinance, it's still going to be a little bit of a bear to read, but one thing I have been doing with aquifer ordinances specifically is basically having a fax or a Q and A, like what are the basic questions, key questions? Here's the answer. This is how this will change things. And that seems to go over pretty well with most residents, and helps board members be able to communicate when you guys inevitably get questions, when you're at the grocery store or at the transfer station.
Sounds good. Sounds like a plan.
Yep.
And when we do it, I'd like to make sure that we get a copy to the code enforcement officer, and make sure that we highlight the areas throughout where we've changed, so that he can go over and review that.
So yep, that is, that sort of line by line, word by word, we have to have that regardless, so absolutely.
Right. Sounds good to me.
I didn't hear anything I didn't disagree with, so, yeah.
All right.
One way of putting it, right?
Unless there is anything else, and I think we can adjourn at 7:45.